Welcome to the May 3rd, 2021 Select Board Meeting. Please note that in accordance with the emergency orders announced by Governor Charlie Baker, this Select Board Meeting will not be open to the public for physical attendance, and the Select Board members are meeting online via Zoom Web Conference. This meeting is being recorded, livestreamed, and cable broadcast by the Easton Community Access Television, which is Comcast 98 and Verizon 23, and on ECAP's website, This meeting is closed captioned for the hearing impaired. If you were watching on your computer, you will see a CC button on the toolbar at the bottom of your screen. If you're watching at home and you have a question or a comment, you can email mblanchard@easton.ma.us or pose your question on the Q&amp;A feature of the Zoom portal. Please remember to include your name and street address for our minutes. At this time, I'd like to ask each Select Board member to state their name to ensure that we have a quorum.
Craig Barger.
Mark Lamb.
Jamie Stevens.
Jennifer Stacy.
And a ploddy full Janetti, thank you so much. So the first item on the agenda is Old Colony Planning Council Award for the Local Pilot Grant. So I will just share with you that Old Colony Planning Council is the regional planning agency for our area, and they received a grant called the Local Pilot Program, and that was for two or more communities to align together to work on something that would have an immediate economic impact to the communities. So several of the communities saw what Easton was doing. So Easton, Brockton, Avon, Halifax, and West Bridgewater all got the grant together, and it will support more of the Easton outside signs and banners. But the really exciting part of it is that there's going to be the development of an online app that can go on your phone and on the website, that you'll be able to search for businesses, restaurants, museums, trails, hiking trails, and all the amenities in town. So that will be developed shortly, and stay tuned for more information on that. And it's really an exciting opportunity for the town.
That sounds really good, Daddy.
Outstanding. We're really becoming leaders in this economic recovery, pushing forward, thinking outside the box, so.
Well, all eyes are on Easton, so keep up the good work, Economic Development Council led by Mark. So the next item on the agenda is a timed agenda item for the Conservation Commission appointment. We do have one open seat, and the term expires June 30th, 2023. We have three applicants, so I will invite them in order as they are on the agenda. So the first applicant is Benjamin Carroll. Hi Ben, welcome tonight.
Hi.
Thanks for being here. So we see your application and some information about yourself, but we'd like to take this opportunity to have you talk to us about yourself and what interests you in the Conservation Commission.
Absolutely. So I'm a lifelong Easton resident. I went to Stonehill, I got a degree in Political Science Concentration and Public Administration, double majored in accounting as well, and then I went to law school. So my day-to-day practice is civil litigation. I do primarily plaintiff-side work, so the bulk of my day is personal injury and consumer protection cases. My wife and I live in Easton. We've utilized the outdoor recreational offerings that this town has, and I was really just looking for an opportunity to give back. And when I saw a seat on the Conservation Commission become available, I thought it was an interesting way to get involved. I've also been involved in some real estate projects personally. Nothing in Easton, but I've represented projects before the Planning Board in both East Bridgewater and Brockton.
All right, terrific. Craig, do you have any questions, starting with you?
Yep, Mr. Carroll, thank you for stepping up, I appreciate it.
Thanks for having me.
The question I always ask of members who are looking to go on the Conservation Commission is, can you talk to me about balancing the need for economic development and the need for conservation and environmental issues in the town of Easton?
See, I think that question is really an analysis that has to happen on a project-to-project basis. You know, I think the Conservation Commission has a charter and a set sort of mission statement as to what it's supposed to do, which is really to enforce the Wetland Protection Act and the bylaws that Easton has. But I also think, you know, part of why I live in Easton and why I think Easton is so special is the character of this community, and I think a huge part of that is the green space that we have and, you know, the natural resources that our town has available to its residents. So I think it's a balancing act that has to happen on an individual project-to-project basis.
Thank you.
Mark?
Hi Ben, how are you?
Good, you?
I'm doing well. You have an incredibly impressive resume. My first question is, with all you do, do you think you'll have time? I mean, I suppose you wouldn't be here if you didn't, but you know, talk about balancing.
Yeah, no, I think that's a fair question. You know, the vast majority of what I do takes place well before six o'clock meeting times. So I think by way of being able to physically be at the meetings, I don't anticipate that'll be an issue. And I think, you know, this is a role that I think is really important to the town and one that I will take seriously. So by being here, you know, I am putting forth to all of you that I would make the time to commit to this and to take it seriously and to review projects before they come before the board.
And, you know, Craig asked about balance with, you know, green space and whatnot. What I look for also is not just balance in that arena, but balance in the board. You know, you have people on different ends of the spectrum, and that's okay, that's diversity, that's what we want. And I look for a balanced board, so it's not leaned on one side or the other. It's representative of the town. And my last question, I don't know, this might be for Dottie. Do we, are there any attorneys on this board currently? We know that. So I love the fact that you're looking at things through a different lens, because I don't think that there are other attorneys, not to say their opinions aren't valid, of course. But you have a lens, you have an education where you see things a little bit differently. And I think you've, you've lived in this town and you've dealt with issues, CONCOM issues, or seen CONCOM issues, and through your lens, I would gather that you might have a unique perspective. So do you think that with your attorney hat, you would bring something different to the table?
Yeah, I can tell you that having worked in a variety of different team settings, I think I'm good at finding, at building relationships that make things happen for better or worse and for what that means. But I think I would bring the perspective of an attorney, you know, who on one hand cares deeply about conservation, and then on the other hand, has in fact been an applicant before boards like the Conservation Commission understands the need to move things forward in a way that sets reasonable expectations for the applicant and gets the town what they need in the process.
Very good answer. Thank you, I'm all set, Dottie.
Thanks, Jamie.
Ben, thank you very much for applying. When you, in your experience in the past, having gone in front of, you know, Conservation Commissions, what are challenges that you came up across, you know, up against? And what are some things that maybe you could do to help, you know, the process in the future for Easton?
In full transparency, I have never personally been before a Conservation Commission on behalf of a project. I do have one upcoming in East Bridgewater, but I haven't personally been before CONCOM. That being said, I've been before Planning Boards on numerous occasions. And I think one of the most, I think one of the easiest ways or the biggest challenges for an applicant is just understanding what a board actually wants and setting that out in a way that doesn't lead to a process where people have six, seven meetings that could have been one. And so, you know, what I see is, what I think might answer your question is just the ability to articulate what it is that a board or that eye on the board actually want to an applicant.
Thank you very much.
Absolutely.
Ben?
Hi Ben, thank you so much for your interest in this role. So the question I have is, your background included a lot of really impressive civic engagement and other volunteerism. Can you describe kind of something that you've learned through that experience? Maybe it was making a tough decision or a situation where you had to work through conflicts that you think would be relevant to this role?
You know, I think more or less, without getting too specific, I think just working, you know, I'm on a lot of boards, and my roles vary wildly on the boards and the roles that I have. And so some of those are really quarterly meetings, where others are things that I've engaged in quite regularly. And I think what always, what always becomes an interesting challenge is just dealing with a broad spectrum of personalities and views on each of those individual boards and doing something productive with the time and the differences of opinions that you have.
Thank you.
Absolutely.
So Ben, I guess what I will say is that over the years, we've had some criticism of some of the boards and committees for the lack of predictability. So when you mentioned that, that really resonated with me. I think that it needs to be a predictable process, but we can't forget that there are rules and bylaws that we have to go through. But my thoughts on it is that, you know, you're, you have neighbors before your board and local businesses that, you know, we want to respect and try to get to yes. So some things are flat out not going to happen, and I'm not saying that, you know, we would ever expect anyone to break the rules. But we want to give guidance as to, maybe you couldn't do it this way, but maybe you could do it this way. And like you said, you know, time is money. So to drag out something even for, you know, whether it's a homeowner or whether it's a small business, you know, to be very clear upfront, here's what we, you know, what we need from you. The back and forth is really a challenge, and it adds a lot of money to projects that come before the board. So I really like that. The Mass Association of Conservation Commissioners has some really great information available. They have a new Commissioner's orientation on their website, and then they also have other, you know, webinars and things like that. So there is information available to guide a new member. And the Chair, Rory Calfield, who's also on this call, he's been really tremendous with the people that are on the board. And he just noted that there are no other attorneys on CONCOM currently. So that answers your question, Mark. So does that all sound like what you had in mind as well?
I mean, so, yeah, one thing that I would like to just be overly transparent about is that I certainly don't think that I know everything about the conservation rules and regulations and the way that they're enforced in Easton. But, you know, I can tell you that resources like the one you just mentioned are things I'll absolutely lean on. And I don't think I've ever been afraid to ask a question or ask for help to people more experienced than myself as well.
Terrific. Well, thank you very much. We have two other candidates, we're going to invite them to come forward. And after that, we will deliberate and make a decision, and whoever is selected will be contacted by the Town Clerk's Office about getting sworn in. And like I said earlier, the appointment on this is through June 30th, 2023. Thank you so much for coming before us tonight, it was good to see you, Ben.
Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you, Mr. Carroll.
Okay, next, Michael Goodman, is he in? He, I think, is on the Galaxy S9? And I don't know if you're just on the phones calling in, Michael, if you can hear me. I think you have to hit star six on your phone to be able to unmute yourself, because it shows you're muted. There you go.
All right, am I live now, Madam Chair?
You're live. Thanks for tonight. So if you were able to listen in, we're going to probably ask you the same kinds of questions. So if you could just introduce yourself and tell us about your interest in the Conservation Commission.
Sure. For those who don't know me, my name is Michael Goodman, and I was born and raised in Easton. I graduated Southeastern Regional Tech in 1989, and I am still a lifelong resident. I own a company which was started in Easton 28 years ago in Rockland Street, up against some conservation land. And as such, I've been in business all those 28 years in, around, and abutting conservation and/or wetlands. I previously served one full term of three years on the Conservation Commission, which I enjoyed immensely, and it was a fantastic learning experience. And I was grateful for the opportunity, and I'd like to repeat that. There's a little bit of, well, quite a bit of work that was unfinished, as well as some new goals that I have. So I thank you in advance for your consideration and look forward to answering your questions. And I'd just like to say, whether I'm selected or not, I think it's great that there's three people looking for this opportunity, because a lot of people like to talk around town and on social media. But as we all know, there's a difference between doing that and actually serving on a board and committee, which is a lot of work. So I'm looking forward to doing it again. But should I not be selected? I tip my hat to whomever it is, because it's a lot of work.
All right, thank you so much, I think we agree on that. Craig, you're up.
Absolutely, Mr. Goodman, thank you for stepping up again, I appreciate that. Again, I will ask the same question I asked you a few years ago, and that I just asked Mr. Carroll, and that is, you talked to me about balancing economic development in the town and conservation and environmental issues.
Well, it absolutely is a balancing act, and I think we... Well, there's no, there's no one right answer. I tend, as a businessman, to lean that way. Obviously, we've got to be cognizant of, you know, of both our charter and our mission statement and the bylaws, but I think we can do a better job than we currently are and a better job in the past. And I think we can do that, again, very simply, as both Dottie spoke to and Counselor spoke to, of directness of whether a project, you know, is viable or not viable, and just getting it and getting out there and getting out in front of it. I think, you know, there's a couple of projects on the books that have just, you know, things shouldn't take three, four, five years. So a better way to balance that would be to continue the work that was started by Rory and myself and the other Commissioners at the time that I served on fine-tuning the regulations and making them more clear and easy for the public to understand. So again, so they know what's expected and vice versa.
Thank you very much.
Mark?
Hello, Mr. Goodman, how are you?
Excellent, long day, how about you?
I'm doing all right. You know, you have served on this board before, and in my opinion, you did an outstanding job while serving on this board. But in, you had mentioned in your introduction, new goals. What new goals? I mean, you're looking at it, having experienced it, and now coming back to it. What are your new goals? What would your new goals be going into it again, for round two?
The biggest goal would be, given what's happened in the world since that term and what's happened in the last two years to our world and specifically Easton, we've all seen a resurgence in outdoor recreation, outdoor activities. We have a tremendous amount, we have more than, we know what to do with green space. And I'd like to see us, as a commission, put our heads together and come up with a plan to utilize some of the more underdeveloped properties that we own, which are really fantastic and have a lot to offer for a lot of different activities and interests. And by that, I mean, everybody knows about Borderland, everybody knows about Wheaton Farm, but there's a lot of other really unique properties in this town that, you know, people can't visit, can't enjoy. You know, by virtue of, mainly, the main issue with a lot of them is parking. But the others are various things related to access, like for example, you know, the old Monty's up on Elm there, at Monty's Ice House. Like, a lot of people don't know about that, there's a lot of good fields there and a lot of different flora and fauna there to enjoy. But there's no parking. So, you know, rather than, and again, as a person who's born and raised, lives on Bay Road, I see that you could put a rotary in up at the top of Lincoln Street at Borderland, and we have all these other beautiful properties. So that would be, that's goal number one. The other thing that I'd like to work on is the eutrophication problem, which specifically, what that is, is that's our waterways and ponds and streams are all clogged, and that's that dying black, you know, plant life that's in those and it backing them up. And it's a problem that's going to continue to get worse and worse, as everybody sees up there, over there on Union Street. And where we're going to be developing the old Benson property, you know, that's going to come into play there. There's obviously a lot of balls in the air on that project. There's going to be a lot of improvements and also a lot of work in and around that area there. And that Dorchester Brook is critical feeder to the Queeset Brook. So those are the two biggest things I'd like to work on. As well as continue the signage replacement, which I don't know why it got halted, we started that program, and I know we have funds available, so whether it was a casualty of COVID or just, you know, the time constraints of, you know, of having only, you know, a meeting every other week, you know, could be, but that's where I'm at on those.
Very thorough response.
Jamie?
Michael, thank you for applying, and Mark stole my question for you. I wanted to know about your goals, so thank you for the thorough explanation.
Thank you.
Jennifer?
Hi, Mr. Goodman, thank you so much for your interest and your time tonight. My question, I'll use the same question I had for Mr. Carroll, which was around kind of your civic experience or your volunteer experience, and something that you've learned that would help you in this role. And in your case, maybe it's something that you experienced in your time previously on the Conservation Commission.
I think the, well, not really a direct answer, but indirectly, I think the best thing that I learned, I learned so many, every meeting virtually was something different, a lot of the different processes by virtue of being the appointee for the Community Preservation Act, being the representative from conservation, that, you know, that certainly was eye-opening and learning how those processes and tax dollars were. And being on the Water Control Study Group, which was the part of the wrapping up of the plume that had got into Shovel Shop downtown. But I think the biggest, the biggest thing that I learned was getting out there and getting to the projects and doing sidewalks. And I'd say 90% of them I did by myself, and that's just how we were doing the commission at the time. We were all doing our own legwork. You know, as was pointed out again by Counsel, you know, we all have busy schedules, different schedules. And the biggest thing for me, learning, was learning from those taxpayers. All those individuals that I got to meet, young and old, lots of different walks of life, lots of just, lots of different flavor, lots of different taxpayers. And it was refreshing and very enlightening just to kind of see, you know, how they look at the laws and what we do and, you know, kind of our charges of commission. Just interesting to see it from their perspective.
Thank you.
So I am glad to hear your comments about wanting to have efficient processes and also the comments that you made about social media and what a challenge that that can be, especially for boards and committees that put in those long hours. So I appreciate the thoughtfulness of that and also the long hours that you have put in on this in the past. So thank you. And like I said to the previous candidate, we will be deliberating and taking a vote tonight, and the person that is selected will be hearing from the Clerk's Office about swearing in. And this term is through June 30th, 2023. So, thank you so much, Michael.
Thank you, thanks for the consideration.
All right, have a good night.
Thank you, Mr. Goodman.
Thank you.
So the next candidate we have is Michael Peterson, and I saw him on here earlier, I thought, and I don't see him now, so.
I did as well, Dottie, I saw him earlier.
So I guess what I'll do, because he's not on here, is just read a little bit of the description that he put in on the application. His occupation, he's a builder, and when it says describe any relevant experience, he's been a builder for 40 years. He's appeared before various Conservation Commissions multiple times and has a vast knowledge of the Wetland Protection bylaws. So I'm just doing another scan through, I still don't see him. So I guess out of the candidates, I really like Ben Carroll's answers. And, you know, I want to thank all three candidates, because it's great to see new faces and repeating faces that are willing to put in the effort. The Conservation Commission is probably, in my opinion, one of the most challenging. You have to learn a lot, there's a lot of detail to know the bylaws, understand it, and to be able to pick that up quickly. So I would support Ben Carroll, and I'd make a motion to appoint him if somebody wants to second that.
Better than second.
So with a motion and a second being made, Craig?
First of all, I think it's excellent that we had three candidates that were interested in what I consider a very important commission. And I agree with you, Dottie, that it takes a lot of time and effort to learn about the wetlands bylaws and the state laws, et cetera, and balancing that need for economic development as well as for the need for conservation. And I guess I will vote for Mr. Carroll as well.
So that would be a roll call vote, so.
Barger Carroll.
Lamb Carroll.
Stevens Carroll.
Stacy Carroll.
And full Janetti Carroll.
If I could, I'm so sorry, Dottie, I don't mean to interject, I just, I need to say something. These two candidates were phenomenal. It was a really hard call, with Michael's experience, his goals, his vision, and with Ben's incredible resume and what he brings to the table and a fresh perspective. But I want to be very clear, this was a hard one, that these were two great candidates. I'm three, but we only spoke with the two.
Right, and so generally what I do after this, because it is, it's probably one of the harder things that we have to do. This and having issues with liquor licenses are really very challenging for us, especially when there are all good candidates that come forward. I usually like to reach out to the people that didn't get appointed to just find out a little bit more about them and see if there's other areas where they'd like to serve or to give them some thoughts about potential volunteer applications in the future. So I will reach out to both candidates and, you know, have that conversation with them. All right, well, thank you, everyone. Moving on to the next item is discussion and vote on contract number DPW 2021-19 with Tech Incorporated for design of Foundry Street corridor improvements.
Sure, so DPW Director Dave Field is here and can be moved into the panel to answer any detailed questions about this contract. But I'm happy to have this contract before the board tonight. This is something that I don't think we actually ever announced at a Select Board meeting, but Easton is the proud recipient for the second time now of a $225,000 Housing Choice Grant from the Commonwealth. So Easton was one of the first communities in Massachusetts, I think, for first crop of 18, Dottie, that was named to this program a few years back. It's a program run by the Commonwealth under Governor Baker's administration that recognizes cities and towns who have proactive housing policies and engage in best practices around promoting diversified housing and coupling infrastructure to housing, which is something we've gone to great pains to do here in the past decade and have had some of that success recognized. So the first $225,000 was awarded to assist with the design of the now complete Five Corners Sewer, which will make housing from Avalon or potentially Sawmill possible. This is another award of $225,000 additional dollars to support that same area for the potential that is there. And the contract that Dave Field has is related to be designed to get a TIP process rolling that after many years can result in what you now have on, happening on Depot Street. So Dave, you want to just talk a bit about TEC and what the five-to-10-year look forward on these contracts are?
Sure, good evening, Dave Field, Director of Public Works. As Connor mentioned, TEC is going to be designing this project for us. It's the first step on getting a TIP implementation project. Uh, is gonna be designing this project for us, it's the first step on getting a tip implementation project going. Uh, there's usually a pretty long lead time, but time from implementation to construction. Um, so this is a great first start, especially where it's being paid with grant funds. We will need additional funds in the future, uh either through mitigation or our own chapter ninety funds. Uh, but we did use T E C previously for the Safe Roots to School Project, I believe in two thousand twelve or two thousand thirteen. Uh, they're a reputable firm, uh I've worked with them before. Um, so I recommend, uh, you know, we award the contract for this first phase of preliminary engineering to them, I'm happy to answer any questions anyone has.
Any questions from the board? Craig?
No, I have none, I'm very excited about the uh the opportunity though. Congratulations, David.
Thank you, and uh planning uh was the impetus behind this uh doing the application, so uh the thanks for the getting the grant, really should go to planning.
Excellent, um, so good, just a quick question, Dave, uh what's the duration of this design? How long will take?
So um the overall design for the whole thing, we really can't predict that because there's reviews of Mass D O T. This this contract would have to be done by. June thirtieth of two thousand twenty-two. For the grant funding uh scenario, so this will get us to almost twenty-five percent design. And then we can go from there, uh we'll need future contract amendments or new contracts as we go forward with new funding sources. But this will all be expended by the end of uh next year. Uh, no questions, thank you, Dave.
No questions for me either, thank you.
I just uh, you know, for people at home, it takes a long time to get these road improvements or intersections or things like that and. Like years in the making, so to be, and we never have the money upfront to do the full design. Um, or even sometimes the twenty-five or uh twenty-five percent design, so when we have um other housing or infrastructure projects that. A little bit can be put away aside for these things, that's how the other intersections have worked also, um with, you know, uh. Fifty thousand here and seventy-five thousand there and a couple hundred thousand here to be able to get those designs. Um, and then that really puts you in a favorable standing with the um Department of Transportation and the tip project. Uh, David is, you know, going to all of these meetings, advocating for Easton, pushing these things forward. Has an unbelievable reputation of success in getting them, but they take, you know, some time, so. This is really um the the best use of a a grant like that to help move this project forward, so. Um, thank you for for you and for the planning department for doing that. Um, Connor?
Uh, yeah, Dottie, if I could just uh add um for the benefit of folks on Foundry Street who've had a lot of construction uh recently. Just to be realistic about timeframes here, um. The, Dave, correct me if I'm wrong, but we were talking twenty-five percent design for the Depot Street tip in roughly two thousand twelve and thirteen, right?
That's correct, uh just for. Just for comparison, it's it's about a ten-year process, you know, you'd hope five to ten years, but. Typically, it's on the longer side, especially with a bigger project, so. Uh, this is a very involved project, it has three bridges or culverts. Um, that would also need to be replaced at the same time, so the design costs will likely be a little higher than. Um, say Depot Street because of that reason, it's a little shorter, but we have some some more impact, so. It's it's a big project, anyway, slices, we we have to start somewhere.
Right, and um. Uh, Dottie, to your point about mitigation, this this two twenty-five gets gets us moving towards twenty-five percent design. Uh, one of the components of the mitigation agreement that the board executed in March with Sawmill was an additional six-figure sum. Uh, that would go towards the same tip uh design, so there is future funding, assuming that makes it through permitting. Lined up as well to keep this moving without dipping into local funds.
And when we did have the visioning session for that area, that was probably the most um popular comment that we heard was a traffic light at Proquonicat. And sidewalks um to be able to connect the business districts of the Target Plaza with the Shaw's Plaza, so. To see this all um come into process, it's not a surprise, but it's nice when we do get grant funding to help move that along. So with that, um if there's no other questions, if somebody would like to make a motion to award the contract. Um, DPW twenty twenty-one dash nineteen to Tech for a design of the Foundry Street corridor improvement.
All moved, Barger.
So that was Barger and Stacy. All in favor, back to you, Craig.
Barger, yes.
Lamb, yes.
Devens, yes.
Stacy, yes.
And full Janetti, yes. Thank you. Thanks, David.
Thank you, David.
Thank you.
Thanks, Dave.
Um, next on the agenda is a vote to accept a gift from to the Eastern Fire Department from David Florence. Um, we do have a memo submitted by Chief Partridge requesting that the board accept and acknowledge a donation of five thousand dollars from Mr. David Florence. This is, you know, we get this from time to time, the board's job is to vote to accept these requests. Um, but we're really grateful that people in the community uh see that as a way to um appreciate the services that they get from the town. And um the fire department puts that money to good use with some of the programs that it has uh in the community as well. So we thank uh Mr. Florence and his family for that donation. And if somebody would like to make a motion to accept, and then we'll take the vote.
Got a motion to accept, and I want to thank uh Mr. Florence as well. And uh thank the fire department for the terrific work they did uh with one of his twins.
Second Lamb and thank you as well.
So that's Barger Lamb and back to you for a roll call vote, Craig.
Barger, yes.
Lamb, yes.
Devens, yes.
A.C., yes.
And full Janetti, yes. All right, next is a discussion in the board appointment of select board members to representative committees. So every year um when the the new season starts after elections uh for July first to June thirtieth. There are appointments and this, there's usually a select board representative on most of the committees that we have. And that's to help um, you know, guide the process also um for who do you reach when you need to have this question answered or. Um, different ideas because they're connected and they see things from a wide overview, so. Um, did we have the Affordable Housing Trust, the Audit Committee, the Budget Subcommittee, Economic Development Committee. Green Communities Committee, Age Friendly Advisory Committee, and the Human Rights Committee. What I would do is go down the list, um the Affordable Housing Trust, that was something that uh Chuck sat on, so that's open. Um, if anybody is interested in that. Let me know.
I'm interested in that one, Dottie.
So um. If so, I'll make a motion to appoint Jen to the Affordable Housing Trust. Can I get a second?
I will second that, Barger.
So that's full Janetti Barger and a roll call vote, starting with you, Craig.
Barger, Stacy?
Lamb, Stacy?
Devens, Stacy.
Stacy, Stacy.
And full Janetti Stacy. We also have um the Audit Committee, I believe Chuck was on that one as well, so if anybody is interested in that, let me know.
Uh, if there's, I mean, it's looking like Chuck and Chuck was on a bunch of committees, so um. I think uh I gotta step up and be on more than one, and if uh if if it's more than economic development. Um, then I would throw my hat in the ring for audit. I hopefully my time on Finance Committee will will come back to me.
Sure, and the Audit Committee doesn't, they're not a a committee that meets every month, they have a purpose and a charter, so it's a. It's a set part of the year that they do that, so that's probably a good choice, Mark.
It was a light lift, I served on that when I was on Finance Committee, um there's a lot of really good information that comes from it.
Great, thank you, now I'm looking forward to it.
So I'll make a motion to not mark for the Audit Committee?
I'll second that, Barger.
Oh, there were two at the same time, I'll give it to Jen Stacy, so it's Janetti Stacy. Starting with you, Craig, for the roll call.
Barger Lamb?
Lamb, Lamb?
Devens Lamb?
Stacy Lamb?
And full Janetti Lamb. So the Budget Subcommittee, there are two appointments on that and I. I know that Tom was on the Budget Subcommittee was, were you, Craig?
Yes, I was.
Okay, so do you want to be on it again, Craig?
Well, I would I would be open to uh Jen or 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 Jamie wanting to step up. Since they're just coming off the Finance Committee, that's a real. No brainer from my perspective.
Jamie and Jen, do you, are you, either one of you or both of you interested in that one?
I would, I would like to go if Jen was gonna go, because then uh I could spin up very quickly that way.
I I I did a year of budget previously on FinCom, I think actually Jamie would be really good uh experience for you and it would be a nice dovetail to your. Finance Committee background, so I'll I'll put in for it as well.
So Jamie and Jen on that? Okay, so I'll make a motion to um, we'll do these one at a time, to appoint Jamie to the Budget Subcommittee?
Go ahead, Mark.
Full Janetti and Barger? And we'll do the roll call with you, Craig?
Barger, Stebbins?
Lamb, Stebbins?
Devens, Stebbins.
Stacy, Stebbins.
And full Janetti Stebbins. I'll also make a motion to appoint Jen Stacy to the Budget Subcommittee, can I get a second? So that's full Janetti Lamb? And Craig, you can start.
Barger, Stacy?
Lamb, Stacy?
Devens, Stacy?
Stacy, Stacy.
And full Janetti Stacy, terrific. So Economic Development Committee, um Mark and I both serve on that committee now. If anybody else, I I would certainly say that Mark should still be on the committee, um.
I would ask for that.
I I would, I would second that, he's done a terrific job and I I appreciate what he's done. The town of Easton and that on that committee and I applaud it and I will definitely second that.
Thank you.
All right, so I'll make a motion to appoint Mark Lamb to that committee, can I get a second?
I'll second that.
So that's full Janetti Barger, starting with you, Craig?
Barger Lamb?
Lamb, Lamb?
Devens Lamb?
Stacy Lamb?
And full Janetti Lamb? And so there's the other seat that I I was in before, if somebody wants that and I I'd be willing to step aside for that if. If that's the case, or I'd be happy to serve. So, let me know. I'm sorry. Okay, Mark, what were you gonna say?
I was gonna, I was, they they looked like there was silence, I was saying it was, it's a really good group and we got a lot of uh momentum, so. Jump aboard.
All right, so Craig, did you make a motion?
Yeah, I I moved that you uh re- return to the uh the Economic Development Council.
Second Lamb.
Okay, so that's Barger Lamb?
Barger, full Janetti?
Lamb, full Janetti?
Devens, full Janetti?
Stacy, full Janetti?
And full Janetti, full Janetti. Um, next for Green Communities, Craig, you're currently currently serving on that, um do either Jen or. Jamie or Mark want to serve on the Green Communities and knock uh, I mean, relieve Craig to another committee?
Uh, Stebbins, I'm I'm interested.
Okay. This is like um a Yankee swap.
I'll nominate Stebbins for the Green Communities Committee.
Second.
So that's Lamb and Stacy? Craig?
Barger, Stebbins?
Lamb, Stebbins?
Devens, Stebbins.
Stacy, Stebbins.
And full Janetti Stebbins. Uh, the next one is the Age Friendly Advisory Committee and uh Chuck served on that and I attend all those meetings. Um, when we brought age friendly to Easton, that was something that I had worked on in my last job and thought it was really exciting, so. I go to all the meetings as a non-voting member, if somebody wanted to go to be a voting member, they're. You know, they're welcome to do that, if nobody wants to do it, I'd be happy to serve as a voting member.
Nominate uh full Janetti.
Second Lamb.
Okay, so that's Barger and Lamb?
Barger, full Janetti?
Lamb, full Janetti?
Devens, full Janetti?
Stacy, full Janetti?
And full Janetti, full Janetti. And the Human Rights Committee, Craig is currently on that. Craig, I don't even see you listed on anything, so do you?
Absolutely.
The first year, we we had you on everything.
Everything, that's right. I'll be very happy to to serve again on Human Rights Committee.
Okay. Anybody?
Nominate uh Craig for uh Human Rights Committee.
Second.
So that's Lamb and Stacy, starting with you, Craig?
Barger, Barger?
Lamb, Barger?
Devens, Barger?
Stacy, Barger?
And full Janetti Barger? Terrific, I really, I thank all of you, you know, it is uh we put in a lot of time on the Select Board and then for. The various boards and committees and other things that we do, um. It's, it is, it's a lot, so I appreciate you doing that and um look forward to seeing you serve on these boards and committees. Next, we have the annual town meeting warrant and review and the signing of the warrants, Connor?
All right, so um attached in your packet uh and and edited one sent to you earlier today. To catch a typo, you have the final uh annual town meeting warrant for two weeks from now, Monday, May seventeenth, seven o'clock at Stonehill College. Uh, there is only two items left uh for the board to consider, the first is Article Five, which is supplementing fiscal year two thousand twenty-one budgets. Uh, this is an item that we would have on any warrant, but we do now uh believe, and we have a finance director here to. Correct me if I'm wrong, but we whittled this down to effectively one item, which is uh that the article will. Be devoted to uh supplementing the current year fiscal twenty-one sewer enterprise fund. Uh, to the amount of roughly forty-four thousand dollars out of available sewer revenues to replace one of two membranes uh. Uh, filter membranes that need to be replaced. Wendy, did I butcher that or got a most?
No, that that's correct, it is just the one item.
Okay, uh so we discussed this with Finance Committee last week, they voted to recommend it, I would ask the board considered to do the same.
Any questions from the board on this one?
Connor, this is the membrane up at Northeastern? Is that where it is, the Northeastern Village?
That's correct, yep.
Regular.
Yes, it it's replacing the the filter uh. Membranes is is something that needs to be done on a semi regular basis.
I remember this presentation was very straightforward. Um, it's necessary for clean water.
All right, if no other questions, would somebody like to make a motion, we already voted to include, so it would be a motion to recommend?
That's right.
To uh recommend Article Five.
Second Lamb?
That's Barger Lamb?
Barger, yes.
Lamb, yes.
Devens, yes.
A.C., yes.
And full Janetti, yes.
Thank you, uh and then, Dottie, uh another item, so this came up earlier, uh there was a basically just an editor's note left in the warrant. Uh, Article thirteen, which is the general stormwater bylaw for MS four compliance, select board's already reviewed and voted to include and recommend. Uh, the third paragraph uh started with a sentence saying development and redevelopment that results in a minimum of forty thousand. Square feet, but it said forty thousand dash or twenty thousand, it the or twenty thousand was supposed to be deleted, so that's. That's it. Uh, the typo got caught, that's been updated, uh so just for the sake of transparency, would ask the board to uh revote to recommend it with that change.
Any questions from the board? So uh if somebody would like to make a motion to amend uh to um vote on Article thirteen. As amended.
It's all moved.
Second Lamb?
So that's Barger Lamb?
Barger, yes.
Lamb, yes.
Devens, yes.
Stacy, yes.
And full Janetti, yes. Thank you, and next is the standing covid update.
All right, Dottie, just one last item, um we typically have a board uh vote uh to uh sign the warrant, um. It's that's more ceremonial, uh but it's just really kind of seals the warrant off and then the board can sign it, so we could post it with constables.
You're right, I missed that part, um thank you, it was on the next, top of the next page, so.
Yeah, the imagination was uh, that's that's my fault, sorry.
Well, uh Craig, if you'd like to make a motion to um to vote to sign the final warrant?
Move to sign the final warrant for the May seventeenth town meeting.
Second Lamb?
So that's Barger uh Lamb and back to you, Craig?
Barger, yes.
Lamb, yes.
Devens, yes.
Stacy, yes.
And full Janetti, yes. So, um Connor, let's just um like take a minute to let people know, um I don't know if you're gonna mention it in in the notes at the end, but. Just update us on uh town meeting is the seventeen. And it confirmed that it's at Stonehill.
Yes, it is, so uh annual town meeting will uh once again be held at Stonehill College, they have been kind enough to continue to. Uh, offer being sports complex up, makes it a lot more doable to continue to observe appropriate social distancing for voters so that they have safe, comfortable place to participate. Um, it will be uh similar uh to the past, I think, three now town meetings, if you can believe that. Uh, there will be ample parking because graduation and uh the uh moving out of students is actually a few days before that. So campus will mostly be closed, um so there should be plenty of space for folks to get in comfortably. Um, we'll have uh certain folks there to help out, Board of Health there to help out as we have with all the elections through covid. And uh we have the Know Before You Go guide out on our social media and website. Uh, with maps of the campus for anyone who may not have been there before and it uh should be a. A nice spring night and uh come help us uh get through our budget and and. And it, uh, should be a, a nice spring night and, uh, come help us, uh, get through our budget and, and, uh, you know, capital and operating budget, some pretty significant stuff in there and, uh, thank you again to Stonehill and, and the team.
Thank you. And, you know, thank you to all the people that, that put this together to make it safe, the people that, um, a lot of them are the poll workers that I see that are doing double duty to help with this, with the check-in. And a lot of hands are involved to make it a safe process for everyone. And we usually, uh, have gotten really great feedback after this, so, um, it's, it's a long night. And, um, we appreciate people, people coming. It's really important to be there and, um, all the people that make it successful, uh, we're really grateful for that. So now, the COVID update.
Uh, sure. Let me grab that. Is viewing okay for everyone?
Yep.
Great.
Yep.
Um, so, uh, thank you, Dottie, as we have done, uh, each meeting for, um, roughly fourteen months now, just give an update to the board on, uh, where Easton is at with its COVID planning. Um, just take a look at the, uh, national situation, state level, uh, changes that may have occurred since the last meeting, of which there are some, uh, tonight. Uh, and how cases are going in Easton. Uh, so the United States, uh, you're looking at, uh, just over thirty-two million cumulative cases. Uh, thankfully, that rate is, is slowing down. Um, roughly five hundred seventy-seven thousand total, uh, deaths. The seven-day rolling average, uh, is, uh, just dipped below fifty thousand, I think, for the first time in, in quite some time, obviously. Still wanna see that number get lower, but it's moving in the right direction. Uh, same thing could be said about the rolling seven-day average for, uh, fatalities in the United States, i- is dipping below seven hundred, which is progress, uh, from where we were in the winter, but we wanna see that continue to drop. Uh, so, as I just mentioned, rolling, uh, seven-day average for cases is, uh, or rolling daily average on a weekly basis is, uh, just below fifty thousand. Um, hospitalizations are declining, which is good. Uh, the last, last week, we had about four thousand more people in the hospital. We had just shy of, uh, thirty-nine thousand. Now it's just shy of thirty-five thousand. Uh, and that's down from a peak of a hundred and thirty thousand Americans in the hospital over the winter. Uh, this is a data aggregating website, COVID Act Now, that pulls together a variety of different metrics, uh, uh, daily case rate, uh, test positive rate, uh, to assign, um, a level of spread in each community. Uh, Michigan is, uh, still being hit pretty hard, although it looks like those numbers are, are beginning to move in a better direction. Uh, Massachusetts and the Northeast are kind of in that middle of the pack area, which is unchanged from last week minus Maine. Uh, Massachusetts, six hundred forty-seven thousand cases, so, uh, thankfully, uh, just like the trends we're seeing nationally, the rate of daily cases is, is beginning to tick down. Uh, in the Commonwealth, this is from Johns Hopkins University, um, we are now, um, I don't have a number here, I apologize. Uh, the average daily cases in Massachusetts are, are dropping and, and moving towards a thousand a day, which is a significant improvement from, uh, nearly six-fold that this winter. Uh, hospitalizations have really started declining, which is great. Um, you're in the low five hundreds now. We were at twenty-two hundred this winter. We were at over four thousand in the surge last spring. Uh, and so as you see the vaccination rate, uh, improve, uh, and particularly now that so many folks who are statistically are more vulnerable to the more severe outcomes of COVID are becoming fully vaccinated, you're starting to see those hospitalization numbers really drop, which is, uh, excellent and is really great to see. And actually, just from last week, you had six hundred forty-one folks in the hospital in Massachusetts and now it's, uh, five twenty-five in the course of a week, so um, hopefully we continue to see that momentum going, drop into the four hundreds and just keep, uh, pushing this farther and farther into the rearview mirror. Uh, since our last meeting, uh, the governor, uh, made a series of announcements regarding the long-term, uh, planning for the Commonwealth as far as the state-specific reopening plans. Uh, so effective last Friday, uh, news that I know was welcomed by a lot of folks who take advantage of, uh, borderland and a lot of the great parks that were discussed during the, uh, Concom interviews is that uh, the face covering order in the Commonwealth has been relaxed. Um, so generally, unless you can't maintain distance from someone outside, you, you don't need to have a, a face mask on if you were outside. Um, which is, you know, great for people who are trying to be more conscientious and, uh, joggers and things like that. Sometimes you're running in the middle of the woods with a mask on to try to be a good rule follower and, um, I know I am, uh, certainly happy about that. Um, effective May tenth, uh, Massachusetts will reopen some outdoor Phase Four Step Two industries, uh, that has, uh, impact on things such as, uh, large venues and, uh, ballparks, uh, amusement parks. Things like road races are, are, uh, going to be able to, uh, start. Uh, coming back into the fold, a lot of this is subject to review and approval by the DPH, so anyone who, who manages events like this, uh, strongly encourage them to check the state website there. Um, but, uh, just more positive momentum towards, um, uh, a degree of normalcy for the summer. Effective May twenty-ninth in the Commonwealth, subject, uh, all of these basically have the caveat that if, uh, we see some kind of you know, bad data coming in on the state level, the, the governor could change it, but subject to things continuing to move in the, the good direction we just noted. Uh, gathering limits will increase, uh, additional outdoor activities will start to be allowed again. Um, bars, beer gardens, breweries, things of that nature, uh, will be able to, to, to start welcoming folks in. Um, so that's, uh, I know welcome news for a lot of those industries who've been pretty hard hit. And, uh, finally, the kind of end bookmark that was put out there was, uh, August first. Uh, you know, again, same caveat, as long as things keep improving, remaining industries will be permitted to open dance clubs, nightclub, saunas, fitness center, uh, steam rooms and fitness centers, um, indoor water parks, uh, ball pits. Um, all industry restrictions will be lifted at that time. Capacity will increase to a hundred percent for all industries. Uh, and the gathering, well, it would be rescinded. So, that is, um, you obviously can't speak for the governor, but it seems like a kind of aspirational, uh, you know, getting back to normal target. He, he did indicate that if things are moving, uh, in a really positive direction, that that date could be moved, uh, forward. Um, you may have seen New York City has picked July first effectively as their, their target, so. Um, I think it's great, uh, that that roadmap's been put out there. I know a lot of folks have been looking, uh, uh, for information along those lines. Each state is kind of following their own path, you know, some are tying mask mandates to vaccination rates and things like that, so. Um, you know, Massachusetts has been one of the leaders in the Commonwealth as far as vaccine uptake, so I, I think it's, it's good to see, um, those positive incentives laid out, uh, in the coming weeks and months. So in Easton, we remain, uh, in the yellow. Um, there's, uh, improvement to the area and to the Commonwealth. This is last week. Uh, you see a lot more red. Uh, and this is this week. You're starting to actually see some green, uh, come back in the area, which is great. Uh, again, that's kind of positive direction. Hopefully we'll continue. Uh, we are, uh, at a roughly twenty-one hundred cases cumulative. Uh, that's up, uh, marginally from your last meeting a week ago, when you were at two thousand seventy-five. Uh, through, uh, last week, uh, sixty-seven residents, uh, had lost their life, uh, to the pandemic. Uh, this is the daily new cases per one hundred thousand, which is a metric that's used for that, uh, traffic light system on the Commonwealth's, uh, website. So, um, we are hovering around that kind of thirty, uh, daily new cases per hundred thousand. Easton's roughly twenty-five thousand, so you're really looking at about seven and a half cases per day, um, being confirmed. This is our weekly new cases. Obviously, we, uh, like the direction that's heading in at this point, and I hope it continues. Uh, we had a, a bit of a a bump back up to about sixty new cases per week. Uh, of a week of April thirteenth, that has dropped most recently below forty. Uh, and again, hopefully that just continues to ride out that direction. Statewide average on test positive rate on a bi-weekly basis is, uh, about two percent, and we're hovering just below that. This is the actual raw data, uh, from, that these graphs are informed by. So Easton's, uh, test positive rate is, uh, uh, one point four nine percent, so that's dipped a little bit from your last meeting a week ago of one point five five percent. That's obviously, uh, moving in the right direction. It's very low. Some of that is, uh, potentially subsidized by Stonehill's ongoing asymptomatic surveillance testing. Uh, so we'll keep an eye on that once, uh, they pack that operation up for the summer, but, uh, indicators look pretty good. Um, as always, uh, although things are moving in the right direction, there's still work to be done, not, uh, you know, we're not at herd immunity. Their vaccines are now widely available, which is great. Anyone who's on the fence or wants to learn more, obviously should speak to their, their doctor, but there's lots of great information on the, uh, Massachusetts website at mass.gov slash COVID vaccine. Uh, nothing has changed since last week's announcement on municipal services. Town offices, uh, reopened three days a week last week. Uh, it was nice to welcome some people back, Frothingham Hall as well, on Tuesdays, uh, Thursdays and Friday. Uh, we have, uh, some tax work-off folks helping us health greeters and, and people have been, uh, have been, uh, great. So that's been, um, that's been a positive thing to see. On the vaccine front, uh, just like last week, vaccines are now available for everyone o- over sixteen years old who lives, works or studies in Massachusetts, which is excellent. Uh, people can book appointments at mass.gov slash COVID vaccine. Folks who have, uh, technology barriers or access challenges can call two-one-one for assistance. Statewide vaccine data, uh, we are over fifty-seven percent of the Commonwealth having received at least their first dose. I believe this is actually the percent of the total population, including, uh, children not eligible, so that's a really impressive figure. Uh, you are looking at more than a third of all residents. Again, you bake in a certain chunk of folks who are not eligible because vaccines are only for sixteen and up. Uh, we're moving in the right direction. Massachusetts is, uh, starting to, to grow the distance between ourselves and the nationwide average on, on both fronts. This is the updated chart for Easton's, uh, weekly, uh, vaccine data. We've been sharing this through our social media channels to just to try, uh, help, you know, build people up for doing their part, uh, you know, moving in, in a really good direction there. Eighty-nine percent of those seventy-five and above have gotten at least one dose. You're nearing eighty percent fully vaccinated. Seventy-five percent of seniors, uh, uh, overall, so, um, very, uh, uh, positive momentum there. We are at fifty-four percent of all residents. Again, that includes anyone, uh, zero to sixteen who can't get a vaccine. Even with that built into the, the, the base, we have more than fifty-four percent of the community has received at least their first dose, uh, which is great. So that is what I have for COVID.
Thank you. Well, I got my second vaccine today and I'm feeling good. Knock on wood. We'll see how I feel tomorrow. Um, but I was listening to a really interesting podcast this weekend that talked, it was on, um, This American Life and it was called The Herd, and it talked about people that don't really listen to, you know, the, the dot, you know, like, they don't wanna listen to the people on TV or the politicians and who will they listen to? And they'll listen to people that tell a story of somebody that they knew that, that had COVID that was sick or, um, you know, other people that have done, uh, who have gotten the shots. So I would just say that for people that are still on the fence or that are thinking about it, um, you know, talk to your neighbors, talk to your family about it, but talk to your doctor. Don't get your information off of Facebook, you know? Um, really go to the professionals and find out, um, what you can do. The shots are really readily available now. Um, you know, they're easy to get. You can, there's a lot of ways to get help. And, um, you know, just hoping everybody makes some good choices. I'm glad to see that we're really moving in a positive direction in Easton. And, um, the other part of that podcast was talking about what a real hit, um, the public health officials have had to take over, having to give bad news and updates and a lot of them. Um, you know, some of the big cities, uh, the, the leaders have moved on because they just really couldn't take the pressure anymore, so I don't know if we all think about when we make comments, um, about our public health agencies. You know, even my, my own frustration sometimes on the state level of, I might have disagreed with the way things rolled out, but um, please know that everybody that's involved has been really working tirelessly about this, um, and m- making, making decisions based on really the best outcomes for everybody in our community. So I really wanna thank, uh, Kristin and the Board of Health and uh, the School Committee for the things that they've had to vote on. It's, it's been really a tough year and, um, I'm really grateful for what they've done. Any other comments on that?
On that, uh, are we into, uh, selectmen's notes?
Yep.
Okay, uh, if I could, uh, make a comment. I'm sorry, Craig, did I, uh, jump in front of you?
Oh, right in.
Alright, um, it's, uh, May ninth through fifteenth is Economic Development Week. And in honor of that, I'm gonna talk about economic development for a second. Um, as you know, uh, I'm the Chair of Economic Development and it's, it's, it's a passionate group of people and we've actually, uh, we've had a year of success, uh, in Easton. Um, obviously, the biggest one that came out of it was Easton Outside. Um, it was just incredible. It's taken off, uh, brought the community together, uh, helped a lot of businesses and it's just a combination of the right people at the right, right time, right place, supporting one another. Um, and it really is incredible. I, I actually, I think the last time, uh, we talked, uh, actually, no, it was in an economic development meeting. And I was, uh, talking to the Economic Development Group about how to get involved in Easton Outside and I said, all you gotta do is show up to a meeting. Um, but be careful, because if you have a good idea, then you're gonna own that idea and you're gonna find yourself at the farmer's market on a Saturday morning at ten o'clock doing Easton trivia, uh, to the, the townspeople. Um, but, you know, it's, it's open to anyone who wants to participate. Uh, other things we're doing, um, for economic development in Easton is the Queesit, uh, Queesit Sewer District, that whole quarter. Uh, there's an analysis, uh, that's being done right now about how to, uh, economically improve that area through recovery, uh, which is very needed. Um, you know, we have some, we, we've, we've invested millions of dollars in infrastructure in that area. Um, and it's slow to take off and we, we, you know, we're trying to, to change some things, adjust some things, so that it can, it can gather some steam. Um, and, and it's, it's a moving target and, um, you know, so that, that analysis is underway. I look forward to what they, uh, come out with. And, um, you know, to Dottie's point that she had mentioned earlier, uh, with these grants, it's funny, cause I didn't, I didn't, it took me years to actually see the pattern of how they work. So, uh, people, I used to be the guy who would, you know, kinda, you know, sigh when somebody said another grant for, for a study. But when you, when, when you have a study that's funded by a grant, it kinda puts you closer up in the queue to getting a grant for actual construction. This, it, they're all necessary steps and, you know, Dave was, Dave Fields was talking earlier, some of these take ten years to do. Uh, economic development takes years and sometimes decades to move it along. Um, and I'm, I'm, I'm a pretty impatient person, to be honest, so it's, it's frustrating to see things move at the pace they're, they're moving. But I will say, Easton is, is moving faster than other communities. We're applying for grants for economic development more than any other community, um, and a lot, a lot of that is due to Dottie, um, bringing him to us and to business in town. Um, but, yeah, so those, those grants are very necessary. Those studies, uh, that people might scoff at, that's gonna bring you up the line to get a real grant for, you know, to get a grant for construction, to actually make development, uh, or create development. Um, we're working with Stonehill, are, you know, uh, trying to work with Stonehill. They have a new program over there. We wanna spread out in town, uh, to people who wanna, uh, uh, businesses and students. Um, they have, uh, pretty incredible things going on there. We're gonna be talking about that in our next, you know, development meeting. Um, we've redesigned the web, uh, the Think Eastern website, uh, created the Easton Outside website. Um, and the farmer's market, last thing I'll leave you guys with, is the farmer's market is moving to Thursday evenings. It's not gonna be on Saturday anymore. It'll be on Thursday evenings, but you're gonna see a whole, uh, all those same people that were there, uh, most of them will still be there. Uh, I think last year it was only like the fish market. This year it's gonna be, as you've been seeing it, but on Thursday night, so continue to support uh, all those businesses and, um, shop local, shop Easton, Easton Outside.
Thank you, Mark. That was great. We might have to take a clip out of that and have that be a little promo.
Yeah, I, I was just gonna say, Dottie, that, that it is, it is very, like, exciting to see Mark's excitement about economic development and the, the work that, 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 that he and the committee have, the council have done. Um, it, it's very exciting and I, I, I think the most exciting part is that the community has responded, Mark, and other communities are asking us, how'd you do that? Uh, and I think that's, that's fantastic. Um, so kudos to you and to Dottie and to that council.
Thank you. I, I pass credit to everybody who's part of it. It's all them. Thank you, Craig.
Um, Jen, did, or, I'll start with Craig. Did you have any selectman notes that you wanted?
I just wanted to a- ask Connor if he could, could, um, articulate. Um, I know we saw the, the, um, the email from our state rep, one of our state representatives regarding some, some, some positive news, uh, in terms of amendments the chief po- proposed and that the House passed relative to the Town of Easton. I'm, I hate to put you on the spot, Connor, but.
Spot. Um, I can certainly pull that up if I have a minute, uh, so I would love for other selectmen notes to unroll while I find that.
Jamie?
Yeah, I'll tap dance for a moment. I kinda over the time, but, no, whi- while he's looking for that, uh, information, yeah, I too, um, probably more specifically wanted to know, um, a little bit about the Chapter Seventy, you know, funds and, and just a little, you know, tell me a little bit about how that's gonna position us, uh, moving forward. Um, and I'll, uh, defer now to Jen unless Connor's ready.
Thank you. Um, Mark, that was awesome hearing that about the economic development aspects and I've tuned into a couple of meetings and I always enjoy watching and um, it's really impressive when you think about where we thought we were gonna be potentially a year ago and how Easton has fared through. Um, but it's hopefully a once-in-a-lifetime event and, um, you know, we have a vibrant, rich, um, uh, economic situation here that, you know, a year ago I was really nervous. economic situation here that, you know, a year ago I was really nervous. So hats off to, to you and the committee for that hard work. I just wanted to share that on Friday, I went to the Arbor Day event at the Ames Estates over on Oliver Street. It was the trustees and the Mass Arborists Association, and they basically have this event every year where volunteer arborists go across the state to various sites and do tree maintenance, landscape maintenance type work. So it was an incredible undertaking what they were doing over there. There were, when I pulled up to go to the event, there were countless trucks and just people working across the expanse of the estate and, you know, trees are being pruned and, and some were sadly had to let, be let go because of disease or other situations, but they were also planting new trees and really thinking thoughtfully about creating a landscape that will be usable for future generations. And the other important part of that too is the benefits that tree maintenance brings to climate change. You know, as we know, we're in a drought situation right now when the trees are actually working incredibly hard, much harder than they should have to, to stay alive. And this is kind of where our water discussion from last week comes into play and how important it is. And those trees also play an important role in the wind situation. They're the first line of defense we have for big wind issues. So when they start to get weekends, we run into a situation where they not only aren't helping us, but they're actually becoming a hazard. So it was a really great event and a great opportunity to, to meet some new folks and see a lot of the hard work that goes into creating and maintaining a beautiful landscape that is enjoyable for all.
Thanks for going there, Jen. You know, I, I live across the street from the, on the Elm Street part of that and I looked out, well, actually I had Zoom meetings I was supposed to be on all day. I had to leave home because it was so loud, but I looked out and all of a sudden, all those big trees were gone. And I was like, oh my gosh. And then a couple hours later, I looked back out and they had all these new trees planted. So it was incredible, the amount of work that they did and it's going to really look beautiful. And like you said, it was very thoughtfully done. So we appreciate you being there on our behalf on Friday.
Thank you.
So back to you, Connor.
Sure. So I will answer Craig's question first and then Jamie's second. So Rep. Claire Cronin let us know that the Massachusetts House adopted their fiscal twenty-two budget. Recently, that budget includes amendments filed by Majority Leader Cronin for three hundred fifty thousand dollars in what would be capital funding for Public Safety Works and Frothingham Hall parking, as well as sidewalks on Black Brook Road, which is great. We thank the Majority Leader for her support. That needs to work its way through the Senate and be signed before any of that could necessarily be sought, but it's a promising development that we appreciate for sure. So that's for first part. Second part, Jamie, those Chapter Seventy and unrestricted aid numbers are identical to the initial proposal from Governor Baker. And that's because those are effectively formulaic. So unrestricted general government aid typically increases by the consensus revenue forecast. So in the fall, state budget years make a kind of collective decision, not unlike what we do here in Easton, where they estimate, okay, we think that the net revenue for the Commonwealth will go up three percent next year. And so that is, whatever that number is, is what the unrestricted general government aid increases for everyone across the board. So that is the same number as we have in our budget. And then Chapter Seventy, although there are a variance between the House budget and the governor's budget in Chapter Seventy, I believe in the big picture for the Commonwealth under the Student Opportunity Act, Easton is a minimum aid community. And so regardless of what that pot of money is, we receive the minimum increase to education aid allowed by law, which is thirty dollars per pupil. So in Easton's case, that's a roughly one hundred thousand dollar per year increase for a forty-three million dollar school district. So that is unchanged from the governor's budget and will not change in the Senate one either. So we are still looking at a very modest overall increase to state revenue in the one to one point four percent range, which is what we are accustomed to. So those numbers reflect what we were already planning on.
Thank you.
So the only thing that I'd want to add for my selectman note is to thank the Lions Club and the DPW for a very successful hazardous waste day last weekend. I heard the lines were very long. And also to the Keep Easton Beautiful team, they've really come a long way over the past several years by a grassroots organization that brings people together, not just on hazardous waste day, but other times throughout the year to have groups of people go out and really just pick up the litter that's on the side of the road, which is just heartbreaking when winter ends and you drive by and you see all of that. So they're a really great group of volunteers and made a big difference. So thank you to them and everybody that participated. So with that, I would take a motion to adjourn.
All moved, Bodger.
Second, Lamb.
Bodger, Lamb. Back to you, Craig.
Bodger, yes.
Lamb, yes.
Evans, yes.
AC, yes.
And full genetti, yes. Thanks, everyone. Have a great night.
Good night.
Thank you. Good night.
Everybody.